Please be seated councillors. Good morning, welcome to the Redcar in Cleveland annual meeting on Thursday the 25th of May 2023. Can I request that all councillors have their mobile phones off or place on silence please? Apologies for absence, is it agenda item one and I've received apologies from councillor Hart. Do we have any other councillors?
Apologies from Andrew Oliver.
Thank you. Item two is the election of the mayor for 2023 to 2024. Could I ask for nominations for position of mayor?
I'd like to propose councillor Malcolm Head.
Thank you councillor Morgan.
May I should Mr Mayor?
Thank you councillor Nightingale. Do we have any other nominations? If that's the case, I am delighted that councillor Head has been elected mayor for the year 2023 to 2024.
Right, just like to thank you all for the faith putting in me and I gladly accept the position of mayor. I will do my best over the next 12 months to represent you all and look forward to getting out and representing the borough. I'd also like to thank Stuart councillor Smith for what he's done in the last year for me because he's led me and give me a lot of knowledge, but thank you all. We now come to the election of the deputy mayor. Can I have a proposal, who would you like as deputy mayor please?
Mr Mayor, could I please nominate councillor Neil Bendelaw.
Have a second there. Any other nominations? Councillor, can I have a second there? Kind of a vote for councillor Bembow please. Show of hands. It's a majority vote, so I pleasure in announcing councillor Bembow as the deputy mayor. Right, I welcome councillor Bembow as my deputy mayor for the coming year. It now brings to item four to approve the minutes of the general meeting on the 19th of May, which has been passed to you all. Kind of a vote of acceptance or any?
Mr Mayor.
Propose a second there. Right, propose a second for the minutes of the annual general meeting held on the 19th of May. Kind of a show of hands please to accept them. That's accepted, thank you. Item five is the myself announcement. The mayor's investor is next Thursday on the 1st of June at 11am and I look forward to as many people coming as possible. I'd now like to hand over to John Sampson for any announcements.
Thank you Mr Mayor, just one announcement. I'd just like to welcome and congratulate all the new and returning councillors to Redcar Cleveland council and wish you all the best and well for the next four years. May I also remind councillors as we go through the agenda today to reflect on your member interest declarations following this EGM, specifically if you've been appointed to any of the associate outside bodies which may have a bearing. Finally, Mr Mayor, I would like to congratulate councillor Paul Salvin, who was married yesterday, starts his honeymoon tomorrow. I hope the council meeting today is not too much of a cactus interruptus for you. Thank you Mr Mayor.
Right, before I go anymore, for the newcomers coming, when you want to speak, you press the button and it comes on my monitor and then I'll bring you in, okay? Right, it now comes to the election of the leader of the council. Can I propose a please?
Yes, thank you Mr Mayor, can I please propose councillor Alec Brown as leader?
Have a second please. Any further nominations? Right, can I assure, a second please for Philip Thompson.
I will second councillor Thompson.
Right, now I need 15 people to vote for elected vote, can you put a vote please? We love a... Right, can I have a vote? Philip Thompson. We have two nominees, councillor Philip Thompson and councillor Alec Brown. Can I have a? Right, I'm going to pass it over to John to do the recorded votes.
Thank you Mr Mayor, I'm going to go down the list, I'm going to read out your name. What I'm looking for is councillor Brown or councillor Thompson in terms of your way of voting. If I do miss you out, I will return to you. Councillor Atwood. Councillor Belshaw. Councillor Bendelaw.
Councillor Brown.
Councillor Berry. Councillor Brook. Councillor Brown. I have to ask. Councillor Corley.
Le Brown.
Councillor Cheney. Councillor Clarke R. Councillor Clarke B. Councillor Craven. Councillor Kerr.
Councillor Thompson.
Councillor Cutler. Councillor Davies. Councillor Earl. Councillor Evans. Councillor Fairley. Councillor Fair... Councillor Fletcher. Councillor Gray. Councillor Grogan. Councillor Halloway. Councillor Hargreaves. Councillor Hart J. Councillor Head. Councillor Hunt. Councillor Jeffrey. Councillor Jeffrey. Councillor Jones. Councillor Joy. Councillor Kerr. Councillor King. Councillor Levann. Councillor Leroyd. Councillor Martin. Councillor Massey. Councillor McHugh. Councillor McInnis. Councillor Morgan. Councillor Meyer. Councillor Neil. Councillor Nightingale. Councillor O'Donoghue. Councillor Uvans. Councillor Pallister. Councillor Polley. Councillor Q. Councillor Quartermain. Councillor Richardson. Councillor Ryder. Councillor Rin. Councillor Salvin. Councillor Smith. Councillor Sothers. Councillor Simmon. Councillor Taylor. Councillor Thompson J. Councillor Thompson P. Councillor White.
Thank you, I have now the results of the recorded vote. Thirty-two votes for councillor Brown and 24 votes for councillor Thompson. I pleasure announcing that councillor Brown is the leader for the forthcoming session. It comes to item seven now, is any announced from the new leader?
Thank you Mr Mayor and thank you to everybody in the chamber. My commiserations to councillor Thompson, who would have made a fantastic leader, okay? Today we see your deliverance of a manifesto, given to the Labour, a mandate given to the Labour group by the people of Redcar in Cleveland and I thank members particularly the Liberal Democrats who enable democracy today and give by far the biggest group in the council, Labour with 23 seats, the opportunity to deliver the mandate the residents of Redcar in Cleveland gave us. First and foremost, I just want to express my gratitude to each and every one of you who placed their trust in me, who voted for me to lead our community forward. It is a trust that I do not take lightly and I assure you that I am committed to serving the people of Redcar in Cleveland with unwavering dedication. As we look around us, we see the challenges faced by our community. The Covid-19 pandemic has brought unprecedented difficulties to our doorsteps, affecting the health and wellbeing of our residents, straining our local economy and exacerbating existing inequalities caused by over a decade of central government austerity measures and cuts. But in the face of adversity, I firmly believe we have the opportunity to unite across the chambers, rebuild and emerge stronger than ever before. Let's not forget the cyber attack, the cost to authority over £12 million, with central government only helping with a fraction of the cost and liability to our residents. Together, we can tackle the urgent issues that require our attention. We will work tirelessly to revitalise our community, create jobs and attract new industries to the region. We intend to ensure that the free part and teesware projects are delivered with 100% transparency and I am committed to work with local businesses, community organisations and stakeholders to develop a strategic plan that nurtures local business startups, invests in skills and training and harnesses the potential of our young people. Education is another area close to my heart. Every child in Redcar in Cleveland deserves a first-class education that prepares them for a successful future. The Labour administration will champion our schools, working in partnership with teachers, parents and students to ensure they have the resources and support for the need to thrive. Let us empower our young minds, providing them with knowledge, skills and opportunities necessary to become leaders of tomorrow. In the face of climate change, we cannot afford to sit hardly by. We are dedicated to making Redcar in Cleveland a beacon of sustainability and environmental responsibility. We will invest in renewable energy projects, promote energy efficiency and protect our natural resources. Let us take action now to preserve our environment for generations to come. To address the urgent challenges of affordable housing, healthcare and public safety, we will make collaboration and partnership a priority in this chambers and outside of the chambers. I believe in working closely with local organisations, with other councillors of all parties to seek solutions to meet the needs of our residents. By working together, we can create a community that's safe, healthy and inclusive. But I cannot do this alone, leadership is not a one-person endeavour, it is a collective effort. I call upon each and every one of you to join me on this journey, let's bridge our differences, unite behind a shared vision and work tirelessly to make people of Redcar in Cleveland a place proud to call home. In closing, I would like to express my sincere gratitude for this incredible opportunity to lead our community. I am filled with optimism and determination as we embark on this new chapter together. With your support and collaboration, I am confident we can build a prosperous, equitable and sustainable future for Redcar in Cleveland. I think I've never been nervous in here until today. Right, can I announce Carrie Richardson as my deputy leader please Mr Mayor? And if I could also declare the cabinet for the coming year. Corporate resources, Christopher Massey. Adults, Lisa Belshaw. Oh sorry, sorry. Children, Lumbire. Economic growth, Lynne Pallister. Health and welfare, Ursula Earl. Climate, Carrie Richardson. Highways and transport, Carl Quartermain. And neighbourhoods and housing, Adam Brook. Thank you very much Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Brown. Kind of a... Okay, thank you for that. I'd like to congratulate you and your cabinet members for all the work they're going to do in the future and also your deputy leader. Which brings me now to item eight, which is the report from the governance director and monitoring officer.
Yes, thank you Mr Mayor, this is the standard report that often comes through to the council which sets out the proportionality of the seats. It has been circulated, I'm not aware of any issues, so if there is a proposal and second Mr Mayor, then hopefully it can be agreed.
Anyone who wants to speak on the? Kind of a proposal that we accept it? The report from the governance officer and monitoring officer. Kind of a proposal that we accept these, this report? And a second there? I've got a proposal, a second, can we accept that report? Kind of a show of hands please? Well, they accepted it, thank you. We now come to representatives on the committees and I will take it one by one. The pity is it's been populated and sent to you all. There's no contested position except the governance committee, where councillor Ryder and councillor Clarke are seeking a place. So on the others, can I accept them on block? Kind of a proposal please? Oh, a couple of changes, can I pass to Steve?
Thank you Mr Mayor, I'm just clarifying, there's only one contested place which is councillor Ryder and councillor Clarke for the governance committee, for the place that's allocated to ungrouped independent councillors. We've been notified of a couple of changes on the list, so understand that on climate, environment and scrutiny improvement committee, that councillor Leroyd is to replace councillor Karen King and on the regulatory committee councillor Johnny Neal is to replace councillor Carrie Richardson. So other than that, I believe Mr Mayor, the committee list can be moved on block and then we'll need to have a vote on the contested position between councillor Ryder and councillor Clarke.
Right, with the exception of the governance committee, can we accept them on block with those changes please? Kind of a show of hands? A proposal? And a second there, right? A proposal and a second, can we accept those on block with the exception of the governance committee with those changes already mentioned? Kind of a show of hands please? It's carried. We've got two... Those positions offered, can I have a proposal and second for councillor Ryder please? And a second please? And the same for councillor Clarke? Second please? Right, can I have a vote? A show of hands for councillor Ryder? And the same for councillor Clarke please? So councillor Clarke is... Sorry. Sorry, by mistake councillor Ryder is elected for that position. Okay? And that is all the committees done. We now come to the chairs and vice chairs. I'm going to take each committee as individually and the first on is the governance committee where I've got two nominees. Can I have a proposal and a second of those nominees please? Yeah, and a second please?
Councillor Morgan please.
And for the second one? Peter, a second please?
For Berry.
Now I've got two nominees for chair. One Carol Morgan and one Peter Berry. Kind of a vote of show of hands, first for Carol Morgan. And the same for Peter Berry. Okay, I've just been announced, thirty-two is the majority for Carol. So Carol is carried as the chair of the governance committee. It's been announced to the vice chairs, can I have a proposal for the vice chairs please? A second please?
Berry.
Any other nominees? There's no more nominees, so I take Peter Berry is the vice chair of the governance committee. Now bring us to the chair of employment and health committee. Can I have the nominees please? Proposal? Stuart Smith. Right.
Can I propose councillor Malcolm Head please?
Can I second that?
Right, any other nominees? Can I, first of all, a vote for myself, a show of hands? I better. Okay.
Sorry? Can I raise a point of order please? I believe that the first person, first candidate that was given a second, second vote should have been the first one that was voted on first, I mean that's the correct quote, Bob.
I've noted that, I'm sorry for that mistake, okay? I got the majority there, so I'm taking the chair of the employment and health and safety. Now it comes to the vice chair, can I have the nominees please? Stuart Smith. A second there? Any more nominees? So I take, I take that Stuart Smith is now duly elected to the vice chair of the employment and health committee. And now comes the regulatory one, can I have the nominees please, proposal?
Can I propose councillor Justin Leroyd please for chair?
Right, a second please?
Can I second that?
Right. Stuart Smith. Second there? Okay, any? Right, any other nominees first please? Right, there's been a request for a name vote, can I have a show of hands for 15 people? Right, we will now go to a name vote, and I hand over to John Sampson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is for the Chair of the Regulatory Committee. We... I'm looking for either councillor Leroyd or councillor Smith in terms of your responses, please. Councillor Atwood. Councillor Belshaw. Councillor Bendalo. Councillor Berry. Councillor Brook. Councillor Brown. Councillor Corley. Councillor Cheney. Councillor Clark R. Councillor Clark B. Councillor Craven. Councillor Kerr. Councillor Cutler. Councillor Davies. Councillor Earl. Councillor Evans. Councillor Fairley. Councillor Fletcher. Councillor Gray. Councillor Grogan. Councillor Hanaway. Councillor Hargreaves. Councillor Hart J. Councillor Head. Councillor Hunt. Councillor Jeffrey. Councillor Jones. Councillor Joy. Councillor Care. Councillor King. Councillor Levann. Councillor Leroyd. Councillor Martin. Councillor Massey. Councillor McHugh. Councillor McInnes. Councillor Morgan. Councillor Meyer. Councillor Neil. Councillor Nightingale. Councillor O'Donoghue. Councillor Uggins. Councillor Pallister. Councillor Polley. Councillor Q. Councillor Quartermain. Councillor Richardson. Councillor Ryder. Councillor Rin. Councillor Salvin. Councillor Smith. Councillor Suthers. Councillor Simmon. Councillor Taylor. Councillor Thompson J. Councillor Thompson P. Councillor White.
Thank you. I have now the results of the vote. Thirty-three votes to councillor Leroyd and twenty-four votes to councillor Smith. So I duly announce that councillor Leroyd is the Chair of the Regulatory Committee. Thank you. I now come to the Vice Chair. Can I have the nominees, please?
Could I nominate councillor Jonathan Neal, please?
Second, please? Any further nominees? Stuart Smith? Seconded. Any other nominees? Okay, I now come to a vote for show of hands for the two nominees, councillor Johnny Neal and councillor Stuart Smith. I do Johnny Neal first. Can I show hands, please? That's a majority vote to Johnny Neal, councillor Johnny Neal, and he is duly elected as Vice Chair. It now comes to the Corporate Resources and Governance Security Committee. Can I have a nominee, please?
I nominate councillor Glynn Nightingale, please.
A second, please? Any further nominees? Second, please? Any further nominees? It's a contest between Glynn Nightingale and Philip Thompson. Can I take Philip Thompson first? A show of hands, please?
The first councillor seconded should be the first person that we vote for.
Right, okay, I'll go to councillor Nightingale then, please. So I've got a majority vote for councillor Glynn Nightingale, who is now duly elected.
Does have a vote.
Sorry?
Can I just remind the mayor that he does have a vote on a point of order? You haven't voted on anything, I'm just... When you're up there, you forget.
Sorry, okay. Coming now to the Vice Chair for the Corporate Resources, can I have nominees, please? Any other nominees? Any other nominees?
Can I just check what we're actually on right now, sorry? Corporate Resources.
Vice Chair, Corporate Resources.
Sorry, withdraw that one. No, it's Vice Chair.
Can I start that again then, please? Can I have nominees for Vice Chair for Corporate Resources? Tim Gray, can I have a second, please? Any other nominees? Second, please? Right, any other nominees? Okay, now let me get it right this time. Can I have a show of hands for Tim Gray? So it's a majority vote, so I announce that Tim Gray is the Vice Chair of that committee. And now comes to Children's and Family Security Committee. Can I have a nominee for Chair, please?
Nominate councillor Karen King, please.
Can I have a second for that, please? Right, any other nominees? I've got two nominees then, Karen King and Craig Hanaway. Both proposed and seconded. Any other nominees? Can I have a show of hands for Karen King, please? That's the majority on that, so Karen King is now elected as Chair of the Children's and Family. We now go to Vice Chairs, can I have a nominee, please? Sorry? Councillor Hanaway, a second, right? Any other nominees?
Evans, please.
Councillor Evans, a second, please? Any other nominees? So I've got two nominees for that, Kendrick Evans and Craig Hanaway. Can I take a vote then on Craig Hanaway first? And now a show of hands for councillor Kendrick Evans.
I asked the Monitoring Officer to actually count the people on this side, because you never know, somebody might be a rebel, they might have got their hand down. So I think everybody should be counted.
Councillor Kendrick Evans got the majority, so I duly announce that Kendrick Evans is the Vice Chair of that committee. Now comes the Adults and Wellbeing and Health Security. Can I have a nominee, please? Have a second, eh? Any other nominees?
Can I nominate councillor Mary Uggins, please?
Mary Uggins, can I have a second, please? Right, any further nominees? Right, I have two nominees, councillor Steve Kay and councillor Mary Uggins. Can I have a show of hands for councillor Steve Kay, please? And the same for a show of hands for councillor Mary Uggins, please? Councillor Mary Uggins has then got the majority, so I'm pleased to announce that Mary Uggins is duly elected as the Chair of that committee. Can I have now the Vice Chairs, please? Steve Kay, can I have a second, please? Any further nominees? Only one for that position then, and I duly announce that Steve Kay is the Vice Chair of that committee. And now comes the Growth Security and Improvement Committee. Can I have nominees, please? A second, please? Any further nominees?
For Ian Hart, please.
I'll second that, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Any other further nominees? So I've got two nominees, Wayne Davies and Ian Hart. Can I have a show of hands for Wayne Davies, please? And the same now for Ian Hart, please? So Ian Hart has the majority, and I'm pleased to announce Ian Hart is Chair of that committee. It now comes to the nominees for the Vice Chair, please? A second, please? Any further nominees?
Please.
Second, please? Any further nominees? Okay, nominees, Chris Jones and Wayne Davies, both proposed and seconded. Can I have a show of hands now for Wayne Davies, please? Another same for Chris Jones, please? Okay, councillor Chris Jones has the majority, so I'm pleased to announce that Chris Jones is the Vice Chair of that committee. It now comes to the Climate and Environment Committee. Can I have nominees, please? A second, please? Thank you. Any further nominees?
Yes, councillor Gemma Joy, please.
I'll second that, Mr Mayor.
Okay. Any further nominees? I have two nominees for that Chair, Philip Thompson and Gemma Joy. Can I have a show of hands for Philip Thompson, please? The same for Gemma Joy, please? Okay, that means councillor Gemma Joy has the majority, and I'm pleased to announce that Gemma Joy is the Chair of that committee. It now brings to the Vice Chairs. Second, please? Any other nominees? Sorry, you, Jack, nominee? And a second, please? Any further nominees? I have two nominees, Jack Simon and Philip Thompson. Can I have then a show of hands for Philip Thompson, please? Right. The majority then is to Philip Thompson. I'm pleased to announce that Philip Thompson is the Vice Chair of that committee. Which brings me now to the Corporate Parenting Board. Can I have nominees, please? Okay. No further nominees? So. I'm pleased.
Can I nominate councillor Karen King then, just to be sure?
Okay. Second there. Okay, now pleased to announce that Karen King is. Sorry. I'm not used to this yet. Any more nominees? No. So Karen King then becomes the Chair of the Corporate Parenting Board. Now comes the Vice Chair. Can I have nominees, please? So any other further nominees? I've got two nominees then. Mary Ovens and Craig Anaway. Can I have a vote, first of all? Mary Ovens first, please. So that's a majority vote for councillor Mary Ovens. So I'm pleased to announce she is Vice Chair of the Corporate Parenting Board. All right, thank you for that one. We now come on to the. So the outside bodies. I'm going to go through this again, one by one. I've got the first one. Association North East Council Collaborative Procurement Subcommittee. Can I have nominees, please?
Could I nominate councillor Chris Massey, please?
Second there, please. Any further nominees?
Councillor Graham Jeffrey.
Any further nominees? For that, please.
Oh. I'm looking at the wrong sheet, sorry. Withdraw that one.
Right. Any further nominees for the place on the outside body? Kurt Pugh. Second there, please. Any further nominees for that outside body? I've got two. Chris Massey and Kurt Pugh. Can I have a show of hands, first of all, for Chris Massey? So I have a majority count for Chris Massey. So he is duly elected as the outside body representative of that committee. It now comes to Teesside Heritage Trust. Can I have nominees, please?
Mr Mayor, could I please nominate councillor Jonathan Neal, please?
Second there, please. Any further nominees? Have a second there, please. Any further nominees? Okay, I've got two nominees. Councillor Johnny Neal and councillor Jack Simon. Can I have a vote on Johnny Neal, please? Okay. Councillor Johnny Neal has the majority. So I'm pleased to announce that Johnny Neal is the representative of that outside body. It now comes to Land of Iron and Einstein Mining. Nomine. Second there, please. Any further nominees?
Could I nominate councillor Linda White, please?
Second there. Any further nominees? I've got two nominees. Stuart Smith, councillor Stuart Smith and councillor Linda White. Can I have a vote of hands for councillor Stuart Smith, please? And councillor Linda White, please. Right. Councillor Linda White is the majority. So I'll announce that councillor Linda White is nominated for that committee. Is elected for that committee, sorry. Hartley Pool Power Station is next. Local Community Liaison Committee. Nominees, please.
Please nominate councillor Izzy Atwood, please, Mr Mayor.
Second there. Any further nominees? Second there, please. Any further nominees? I have two nominees. Councillor Izzy Atwood and councillor Dave Turley. Can I have a show of hands, first of all, for councillor Izzy Atwood, please? So I've got a majority count for councillor Atwood. So she is duly elected as the representative on that committee. Now we come to the Industrial Communities Alliance Committee. Nominees, please. Second there, please. Any further nominees?
Yeah, Mr Mayor, if I could withdraw Marion Fairley and off the sheet and just nominate Lynne Pallister, please. Councillor Lynne Pallister.
Right. Second there, please. Any further nominees? Any? Second there. I've got three. So I'll take it. Any further nominees? I take it I've got three nominees. Councillor Lynne Pallister. Councillor Neil Hargreaves and councillor. And Tim Gray. Right. Can I have a show of hands for councillor Pallister, please? A show of hands for Tim Gray, please.
Yeah, we're, Mr Mayor, we're voting on one place at a time. So you get one vote for each place, obviously. Actually councillor Pallister did get thirty-two on that vote, which would be a majority for that place. So that place would be filled, Mr Mayor. So we would vote for the second place. And obviously councillor Pallister would come out of the list now.
And I've got a show of hands of councillor Tim Gray. So the majority vote then. So I announce that councillor Pallister and councillor Tim Gray elected that outside body. It now comes to Merchant Navy Welfare. Can I have nominees, please?
Can I nominate councillor Ursula Earl, please?
Second there. Any further nominees? Second there, please. Any further nominees? I have two nominees. Councillor Earl and councillor Taylor. Can I have a vote for councillor Earl, please? That's the majority for councillor Earl, who was elected for that position on that outside body. North East Migration. Can I have a nominee, please?
Can I nominate councillor Lisa Belshaw as well, please?
Second there. Gemma Joy. Any further nominees? Second there. Any further nominees? Right. Who went first? Right, I have three nominees on that. Councillor Belshaw, councillor Joy and councillor Simmons. Can I have a show of hands for councillor Joy, please? Councillor Belshaw, please. Councillor Jack Simmons, please. Right. Right. Because those are three people put up there and there's only one place. Gemma Joy drops out. So I need now. A new vote again for councillor Belshaw and councillor Simmons. Show of hands for councillor Belshaw again, please. That's a majority vote for councillor Belshaw. So I'm pleased to announce councillor Belshaw is the representative of that committee. So I've got two positions, three positions on this committee. Two for non-executive positions. Can I have then a nominee, please? Second there, please. Any more nominees?
Sorry. Can I nominate councillor Chris Massey? And then for the executive rep, or is that a separate vote? Separate vote, yeah. So just councillor Chris Massey, please.
Any further nominees for the non-executive positions? Right. I've got councillor Kerr and councillor Massey for those two positions. Did I have councillor Anaway of that, did I? Did anybody? Sorry, I missed that one. All right. Right. I'll come back for the executive committee member in two seconds. Right. Can I have a show of hands for Craig Anaway, please?
This is single because there's three candidates for the two seats.
I'm taking the vote first on the two non-executive ones.
So we get two votes?
Yeah, then we go back to you.
Sorry, Mr Mayor. Just for clarification, there's two places on the non-exec positions. So we'll take a vote for place number one and see who's appointed to that. And then we'll move on to place number two. And then the exec committee will follow.
Right. A show of hands for Craig Anaway, please. Now a show of hands for Carol Kerr, please. And now for Chris Massey. Okay. There's no majority there. So Carolyn drops out and we'll re-vote on Craig Anaway and Chris Massey again. So can I have a show of hands for Craig Anaway, please? Twenty-two. And the same for Chris Massey, please. That's the majority for councillor Massey. So he is nominated for the. Chris Massey is appointed for that position. Bit confusing, this one. Chris Massey's got the first position. We now go back to councillor Anaway and councillor Kerr again for the second position. So can I have. So can I have a... Show of hands for councillor Kerr, please. Eleven. And councillor Anaway. So the two positions for non-executive positions are councillor Massey and councillor Anaway on that one. We now go to the member for the executive committee representative, can I have a nomination, please?
Can I nominate councillor Jonathan Neill, please?
Secondary. Any further nominees for that one? No further nominees, councillor Neill is... Sorry. It's already on it. The managing officer doesn't think that Chris Anaway can have another position, there's three positions, so... Okay. Councillor then. So I have two nominees, any more? I have two nominees for the executive position. Which is both positions seconded, councillor Neill and councillor Kerr. Can I have a show of hands for councillor Neill first, please? That's a majority verdict for councillor Neill.
On the point of order, I think that needs to be clarified. I I was on the video, and I'm pretty sure that there are three places, and one of those goes on the executive. Yeah. Yeah. But that's that's how we've been voting, is it then? Okay.
Which brings me to the North Yorkshire Moors Local Access Forum. Sorry, I missed one. North Eastern Inshore Fisheries, can I have a nominees, please?
Yes, Mr Mayor, can I nominate councillor Kerry Carley, please?
Secondary. Any further nominees? Secondary please. Any further nominees? I've got two nominees, positions seconded, is councillor Carley and councillor Anaway. So can I show, there's only one position, so can I show a hand for councillor Carley, please? That's the majority count for councillor Carley, so councillor Carley is elected for that position on that board. So we'll come back to now north east, North Yorkshire Moors Committee. Can I have nominees, please?
Can I nominate councillor John McHugh, please?
Secondary please. Any further nominees? Jack Simon, yeah, any further, have a secondary. Any further nominees? I've got two nominees for one position. First of all councillor McHugh and councillor Simmons, both positions seconded. Can I have a vote for councillor McHugh, please? So councillor McHugh has the majority vote, so I announce that councillor McHugh is duly elected for that outside body. We now come to the North Yorkshire and Cleveland Coastal Forum. Can I have nominees, please?
Mr Mayor, could I move Kerry Richardson and Izzy Atwood, and can I withdraw the nomination on the form for Janine Craven, please? So Izzy Atwood and Kerry Richardson.
Can I have a second, please?
The mayor, I'm sorry to be a bug bearer, but protocol is protocol, and I was always on the understanding that you should stand when you were speaking to the mayor. Thank you.
Noted. Sorry, I've got Kerry Richardson and councillor Atwood. Can I have a second, please? Any further nominees? Secondary please. Any further nominees? Secondary. Any further nominees? Right, I've got four nominees, I believe, for three positions. Right, a vote for Carol Richardson, please. This is the first position voted for, then we'll come back for the other two positions. Right, that's a majority for that, that's the first position appointed is councillor Richardson. Can I now vote for the second position? Which councillor Izzy Atwood. Can I have a vote, please? That's the majority for the second position, for councillor Atwood. Right, we've now got to Philip Thompson for the third position. That's the majority, so Carol Richardson, Izzy Atwood and Philip Thompson elected for representatives on that committee. Which brings us to the Assistant Advice Bureau for Redcan Cleveland, nominees, please.
Can I nominate Marion Fairley, please, Mr Mayor?
Secondary. Any other nominees? Julie Hart, second. Any further nominees? Right, I have two nominees for that, is councillor Fairley and councillor Hart. Can I have a vote, there's only one position, can I have a vote for councillor Fairley, please? That's the majority vote for councillor Fairley, she's duly elected for that committee. Which brings us to the Redcan Cleveland Domestic and Sexual Vines Reduction Committee. There's only one place, can I have nominees, please?
Could I nominate councillor Ursula Earle, please, Mr Mayor?
All right, secondary. Any further nominees?
Can I can I nominate councillor Kendra Evans, please?
All right, secondary. Any further nominees? And councillor Anaway, secondary please. Any further? I've got three. So I've now a vote for one position, it's councillor Earle first, please. Same for councillor Evans, please. And councillor Craig Anaway. Right, councillor Evans has the lowest vote, so we, she drops out, we re-vote now for one position between councillor Earle and councillor Anaway. Councillor Earle first, please. So councillor Earle has the majority on that one, so she's duly elected for that position on that outside body. Which brings to the Redcan Cleveland Schools Forum Board. Can I have nominees, please?
Could I nominate councillor Luke Myers, please, Mr Mayor?
Secondary.
Councillor Anaway against chair, I think I was stood up first.
Sorry. Secondary. Any further nominees? Right, can I have, I have two nominees for one position, can I have a vote on Luke Myers first, please? So councillor Myers has a majority vote, so is duly elected for that outside body. The what, the next one is the twinning one, which I'm automatically nominated and... Nominated for that committee. We now come to Sir William's Turnus Hospital, can I have nominees, please?
Please, and withdraw councillor Kendra Evans from the list.
Okay, any further nominees?
Could I nominate Marion Fairley and remove myself from the list, please, Mr Mayor?
Now a secondary for that, please. Secondary please. Right, any further nominees? Right, I have three nominees then for two positions, councillor Fairley, councillor Evans and councillor Gorgon. Can I take a vote now on councillor Evans, please? Right, that's that's the majority verdict for councillor Evans, she gets the first position. We now go on to for the second position, which voted for mayor councillor Fairley and councillor Gorgon. So councillor Fairley first, please. So that was a majority decision again, a vote again, so councillor Evans and councillor Fairley are duly appointed to that outside body. Now it brings to the South Tees Youth Justice Board. Debbie Power, secondary please. Any further nominees?
Mr Mayor, can I withdraw Neil Bendelow from the list, please?
Right. Any further nominees? Secondary. Any further nominees? I have two nominees, councillor Powley and councillor Seren. Julie, position seconded, there's only one place, so can I now take a vote on councillor Powley? Councillor Powley first, please. Right, so that's councillor Powley's been, got the majority vote, so she's duly elected for that position. It now comes to Standard Advisory Council Religious Education, can I have a nominees, please?
Anaway, please, Mr Mayor.
Secondary. Any further nominees?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor, can I nominate Linda White, remove Lisa Belshaw from the list, Marion Fairley and Jade Leaven, please?
Right, can I have a second for Linda White, please? Any further nominees? Right, mind, I've got four places. Any further nominees? Okay, I have four nominees for this one. Linda White. Councillor White, councillor Fairley, councillor... Ravan and councillor Craig Anaway. I have four positions, those four then are duly elected for that position on that outside body. Which brings me to the last one, I think, T-SAD Pension Board, can I have a nominees, please?
Can I nominate councillor Chris Massey, please, Mr Mayor?
Secondary. Any further nominees? Seconda. Have any further nominees? I have two nominees, which is both proposed and seconded, which is councillor Chris Massey and councillor Paul Sullivan. There's only one position, so can I take a vote first on Chris Massey? So that's a majority verdict, a verdict I was going to say, a majority vote for Chris Massey, he's duly elected for that position. Thank you all that votes on that one. Now we want to agree the scheme for delegation as set out in part three of the constitution. Accept the powers of the lead to approve the scheme for delegation of executive powers. Can I ask the lead, please? To move it.
Move, move and delegate.
Can I have a second, please? Can we agree that then by show vans, please? It's carried for that then. It brings to the last item on the agenda, which is to approve the programme of the ordinary meetings for the council of the following year. I think you've all had the the notes of the date, can I ask the lead to approve the programme of the date?
I approve, Mr Mayor.
Okay, so I ask the, for show vans just to move that. It's carried. All right, that brings the end of the difficult
Mr Mayor, point of order. I am, I am standing. I'm wonderful.
I'm listening.
I'm crouching tiger. Um, I want some qualif- um, clarification, please, on the bodies such as the fire authority, police, South Ties Health, that block of committees. Are we not voting on those today?
Advisory, where it was advisory, where proportionality wasn't an actual, we didn't have to go, but proportionality was advisory. Like for instance, the, in the North Yorkshire Moors, for instance, where it advises two party seats, but it's only advisory.
All the names were in the committee lists and voted through on block? Sorry, as a point of order, the committee list was voted through on block in terms of the ones where proportionality does apply. I do not recall any reference to have been voted through on block in the list of the committee list where it says proportionality does not apply. Which are the items councillor Brown and councillor Morgan are speaking about?
Right, the monitoring officer just got a check, we'll come back in a few minutes on that one.
From twelve of the agenda on the dates of the next four meetings. Should we not be agreeing the date for the next special budget next year as well?
I think, Mr Mayor, if I can answer that question, we have scheduled a normal council meeting at an appropriate time in the calendar to pick up the budget without the need for a special council meeting. Then that will fall into normal cabinet and normal scrutiny arrangements.
With reference to that, we've looked at it through the other monitoring officer. It was voted through on block, but the monitoring officer is going to look at it again and bring it to the, out at the next meeting. Quite happy with that?
Have to be taken up at various venues before the next meeting. In fact, I queried it with Philip, the same point that has been raised. Can't we, in fact, at this meeting, just approve these joint arrangements on block? Because they've already been agreed between the groups. And that would just get it out of the way and it would be, it would have the authority of this council behind it.
Just to back up on a point of order, what councillor Kay said. One of these appointments is for the North Yorkshire Moors National Park and under the Environment Act of the United Kingdom, that appointment is in law for four years, whoever is appointed. So if we make the decision that the monitoring officer is suggesting today, the people appointed to the North Yorkshire Moors National Park cannot be changed at the next meeting, hence we need to make the decision today.
Can I bring the monitoring officer in, please?
On several occasions when the voting on the North Yorkshire Moors has been taken here and it hasn't been based on proportionality whatsoever. And I think we should rescind that decision that we've made and I'd very much welcome a seconda for that.
As proposed and seconded.
I love it. Yeah, just to remind members and the mayor, sorry, that obviously item six has been voted on and it has been carried. So as far as this meeting is done, the item has been voted on, it has been accepted. So as far as I am aware, unless someone wants to tell me otherwise, the decision has already been taken by this council.
Looks at the legal side of that one, please. We convene in five minutes. So that's a majority verdict, a verdict I was going to say, a majority vote for Chris Massey, he's duly elected for that position. So that's a majority verdict, a verdict I was going to say, a majority vote for Chris Massey, he's duly elected for that position. So that's a majority verdict, a verdict I was going to say, a majority vote for Chris Massey, he's duly elected for that position. So that's a majority verdict, a verdict I was going to say, a majority vote for Chris Massey, he's duly elected for that position. Right, can I bring you back to order, please? Right, I think we've had a longer recess, so I'm going to open it up again and ask the monitoring officer to give his verdict, what we're going to do.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is a difficult position, which we've not encountered before, unfortunately. I don't think it's one where there's a clear cut legal answer. So I'll just have to give it my best on the balance of probability. One view is that the decision's been made and there's no provision in the procedural rules to go back and revisit that. However, from the representations that have been made from various groups and members, it does seem fairly clear that there's a large number of members weren't clear that we were taking a vote at the time for the North Yorkshire Moors National Park, the Rivertees Port Health Authority, the Freedom of the Borough Advisory Committee and the Corporate Pairing Board, which are the non-proportionate committees, if you like. If it's not clear what the vote was taken on, then my feeling is that is legally challengeable. And so my advice to the mayor would be that we accept the on-block vote as far as the other committees go. But we take the view that the non-proportionate vote is invalid because it wasn't clear what the council was voting on at the time and that we now proceed to vote on those on a separate basis. But it is a matter for the mayor as chair of the meeting to make a ruling.
Right, I accept what the monitoring officer said. We will take on block the vote that's been done, with the exception of those four. The North Yorkshire Moors, the Rivertees, the Friends of the Borough and the Corporate Pairing Board, which, because people didn't know what they were voting on, is proposed we re-vote on those. Councillor Davis.
Point out my opposition to the fact that we're re-voting on something that the council has expressly already committed a vote to. The fact that people haven't read the agenda items and read the agenda and read the information that's within it is not down to each individual councillor in here to now go back and re-vote for it. So I'm expressing, on behalf of our group especially, that we should not be re-voting again on this item. It's already been discussed, it's already been voted on. And if we have to, we will go away from this meeting today and we will look at a legal challenge of our own if we have to. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Right, I accept that challenge, but I think we've right, we re-vote on those four items. So can I take the North Yorkshire-
Point of order, Mr Mayor. I would back our fellow colleague up here. We were totally under the impression of what we were voting on earlier this morning. And we stand by what this gentleman says as a party.
The point is that some members have left the meeting on the understanding of the vote being completed as well.
Order, Mr Mayor. I think it's very clear that the information that was supplied, in particular the North Yorkshire positions, is in here. And it implied that those two places were taken. And so consequently, obviously, if that is the case in the written document, other parties and other groups who may wish to nominate were precluded from doing that. And this is the basis for having a rerun of these votes. And just on that particular matter. And so consequently, I think that the decision that has been made is accurate and personally I would support it.
Agree with that. Everything's in here, right? Anybody who wanted to stand for any of these committees, outside bodies, had the chance before this meeting and they all knew that. So what you're saying there is inaccurate. As far as I'm concerned, we voted on this. If people have left, I'm sorry, that's their personal choice, they've left. I think we've already done it and we should agree with what we've already voted on.
Seconder. Can I give you, after discussing with the monitoring officer? Can I have your attention, please? After discussion with the monitoring officer and listening to the remarks, I think we take it as read now that they're voted on on block. And that stands. And we now close the meeting. Thank you for all.